Good evening. This is the Greenfield Public Schools Special School Committee meeting. It's Wednesday, August 18th, 2021, 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' June 16, 2021 Order extending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, Section 20. And we'll move right into the agenda and do a roll call, please. Vice Chair Abstrom.
Chair Proradi.
Here.
Member Karen.
Here.
Member Hollins.
Here.
Member Wall. Mayor Whittigardner. Member Johnson Musa is on vacation, and I believe Member Whittigardner is attending the City Council meeting. So as of right now, we have Chair Proradi, Vice Chair Abstrom, Member Karen, and Member Hollins. We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. So we called to order at 6:02 PM, and I would like a motion at this time to actually move the order of business on the agenda to make the next item of business, item number two, be reports of the administration, the school business manager report on FY21 and FY22 budgets. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, did I cut out for a second? We're good? I missed it all. I think I cut out for a second. Sorry. Do we have a motion in a second?
I moved it. Hollins seconded.
Thank you both. And any discussion? This is so Andy can be in his usual three places at once, and we're giving him the courtesy of letting him go first. Can we take a vote, please?
Chair Proradi.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
And I'm yes, we are unanimous.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Paquette, please, go ahead.
Okay, again, thank you for meeting my requirements. You're all too kind. I have positive news as far as for both FY21. We are all closed for all intents and purposes. Everything is, we worked with Ms. Gilman, you know, was in constant contact with us regarding during our final year and reclassifications. We had planned to use the end-of-year balances for the retroactive due to negotiation settlements. So that's what we're going to be using that for. We ended up putting it into school choice just because of timing issues, but that's going to be used there. And so we've ended the year, I'd say, when you look at the balances, what we're beginning FY22, and I'll say favorably. And, you know, despite what might be, I'd say, perceived as high balances, we do, once we do our, as I've mentioned before, our FY22 budget rebuild, you will see those funding sources used to offset where it is to meet our needs versus what it is that the city provided us. So that's where we are. I can answer, and then my thought is, I know from the last meeting where there was discussion about setting up, and we could set up, I'll have to check with the Business Office of the Budget Finance Subcommittee meeting where we can do our final FY21 closeout, you know, to get their approval to go forward with recommendations on the budget reclassifications and also to do the FY22 budget rebuild. So that would be, I'd say, somewhat of a busy agenda for the Subcommittee, but worthy and an exercise that we will have to do. I would like for FY22 for us to do it sooner rather than later because, as we tried to do last year, we did our final FY21 budget rebuild, I think, in April maybe, or, you know, just because, you know, in the wonderful world that is COVID, things kept coming up that pushed that to the, no, we'll do it, take it up the next agenda. Oh, we'll take it up the next agenda. So if we could get that sooner, we could do our level reset of the budget as close to real time as possible. So I've said a lot, so I can answer any questions you might have on FY21 and/or FY22 as of where things are right now. I'll say for FY22, though, beforehand is that, you know, we're a month and a half into the year. There's nothing alarming that has happened over the summer, so.
No, nothing with bans, Andy?
Don't bring that up. No, nothing, because that's when we first started. That was, welcome back to Greenfield. We've got a banish.
Yeah.
So I want to mention that while I was on my vacation, I went by a lot that had multiple buses, school buses for sale, and I thought, hmm, I wonder if we need those.
As my mother would say, look what thought done to you. So.
So it doesn't sound like you need any motions from us. We're just.
No, just, I know, any questions or anything? I know the stuff was sent yesterday, but if there's any questions on anything in specific or overall in general, I'm capable and able to answer them.
Sure. Looks like Member Hollins. Go ahead.
I didn't have a chance to look at the info. I was just curious if there was funding for prepay special tuitions, and if there was, what amount were we able to use?
That was tied to there wasn't because the balance that we are using is using for the retro. So we're using that to cover negotiated two years of retroactive.
And we do have enough to cover that based on?
Yes, we do. Yes.
House Member Hollins? Any other school committee members have questions for Mr. Paquette?
Sounds like we need to do a meeting next week, Andy.
Let me check. I could, if I can circle back with you, Member Abstrom, on Friday. I just want to touch base with the Business Office. I know Loretta's been hard at it with Susan and HR personnel as far as finalizing their retros, so we went through and we did that. I should tell you, they did the real work of it, and I just reviewed it to make sure that everything is right. But I just want to now just circle back with them to see as far as the next step of adjusting in munis to make sure that we've got everybody's new salaries corrected. So I'll circle back with you on Friday to see about setting up a time once I touch base with them.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Another question.
Sure. Member Hollins, another question?
I did have another question. Could you tell us which unions had retroactive pays and an estimate of what all of that added up to? If that's easy to, it wasn't every union that had a retro, right?
The ones that were settled, the one that was settled was the teachers. And I know the other one, cafeteria and custodial are in process, but if you give me a second here.
Just an estimate of what you think that would be, what it might be.
I want to say is about $260,000. Don't hold me to that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's amazing. Thank you. Very impressive. Any other questions from the school committee? Member Karen or Member Wall?
Is Member Wall here?
Yeah.
She is now. Excuse me. Yes, she's now here.
Okay. Wonderful.
Thank you, Andy, very much. Appreciate you.
Oh, no problem. Thank you again for accommodating me.
Absolutely.
You're all too kind. You're all too kind. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we are going to go back to public comment is the next item on the agenda at this point. And I am looking for anyone who is interested, the way we do it is the first round. We will look for people to put their name in the comment section of the WebEx, if you're able to do that. If not, we'll call on people verbally. Put it in the chat if you're able to. I'm not seeing anything in the chat. Do other members, Vice Chair Abstrom, do you agree with me?
Yes, I do not see anything.
Okay, so simultaneously, we'll take calls for anyone who might be on the line who's interested in speaking. I actually believe ECTV, we did just have someone join. Everyone else appears to be connected to the meeting. The person who just called in, are you interested in public comment? We're taking calls right now for public comment. Anyone?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering. That's helpful. So I do not see anyone indicating public comment. And the one person on the line who's identified that they do not want to speak, it appears to be, to me, the only person that's not school committee related. Does everyone, does, at least Vice Chair Abstrom, do you agree with that?
I do.
I see some nods. Okay, so we will move away from public comment. We've done item three. We're now to the family handbooks for the schools. And I would like to hand it over, I think, to Judy to start here. Does that make sense? Go ahead, Dr. Hul. Thank you.
You have in your packet this evening handbooks for all of our schools. In the past, your handbook has been a single handbook for the entire district. And when we took a look, when I took a look at that, it was also five years old, so it was in desperate need of updating. When I took a look at that, it read like kind of a very punitive type of document and didn't provide a whole lot of helpful information to families. Looked at some exemplars of different handbooks and along with some help from one of our TMS consultants on this, put together a set of handbooks that has consistent navigation in it. The back section, which is the school committee policies, is the same for each handbook. And then the front section, the principals worked really hard to do something that would be welcoming to families. So you have a letter from the principal welcoming families, and you've got the schedule, the school calendar, the staff members as we know them currently, and just some generic information that is, you know, specific to each school. We want to be able to do something that really helped families feel like they were being welcomed into the school, that they had information about their child's school that would make some, you know, sense to them. The other thing that we did too was we changed the title. The former title of the book was A Parent-Student Handbook. We felt like that was not an inclusive enough term for all families, and so we changed it to A Family Handbook, so that's a more inclusive term, again, more welcoming to all of our families. So what you have in front of you tonight is a work in progress, and all of the principals are here except for Ms. Putnam, who's the principal at AEL. And I know there was a family commitment. She wasn't sure she was going to be able to come this evening. But the rest of the principals are here, and I just want to publicly acknowledge them. This was a pretty hefty lift over the past month or so that they've had to do to put all of this information together and to get it into a format so that it doesn't matter what school your children go to, you can find the same information in the same spots. And we wanted to be just mindful of not having six different handbooks that look completely different six different ways. And so that was our goal in being able to do that, making sure that families are aware of policies that impact them and their children, but also giving them some, what we hope is helpful and useful information with regard to their child's, children's school. So we're happy to take questions. These are works in progress. We are looking for an approval so that we can send them out to families because this will be a key piece to get up on the website and to get ready to roll. We will get these also translated into the languages that are used by families in our district whose first language in the home is not English, so that they have, again, access to these as well. So this is a critical piece as we get ready for school to be able to get these up on the website with the understanding that particularly with COVID, there may be some adjustments during the course of the school year, but that this is the start of an annual process of revision, review, that we hope will carry forward. And so with that, I don't know if any of the principals want to add anything at this particular point about the work that they did, but I just want to, again, tip my hat to them. They've had a very busy summer, and this was a pretty hefty lift, and they really worked long and hard and worked collaboratively together to produce the results before you this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hul. And any of the principals, please, I'd love to have you share any comments you'd like to make now. I know I am certainly impressed with the work. They all look terrific. Any comments from the principals? So what I think, oh, Lindell, would you like to, please, go ahead?
Sure. I'd like to appreciate the process and the support we got with this undertaking. And I do think it was indicative of the culture that we're developing of collaboration. So for instance, the middle school and the high school had a lot of dialogue so that there could be continuities in our expectations, and we could learn from each other's models. And I think it represents a culture that I really appreciate is developing.
Awesome. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Any other principals? All right, so what I think we'd like to do, just to keep it clear what we're doing, is actually take a motion to approve each handbook individually. That way, if members do have comments or questions about any of them, we can answer them individually and have the right person be a resource for answering questions. Does that make sense to the school committee members that are on?
Yes.
I think I can see most of you. I can't see Member Karen, but she's pretty flexible usually. All right. She'll speak up if she doesn't like the idea. I know that. Okay, so a motion to approve the FY21/22 Academy of Early Learning Family Handbook as presented.
So moved.
Member Wall and a second?
Second.
I think that was Member Karen. Thank you. And any discussion? Member Abstrom?
So, and so I do graphic design, and everyone is going to look at me and be like, no one cares about this. However, I know, so I'm looking at the way that's formatted on paper. I know that it will be easier for people to access if you have a more typical margins on the left and right gutter. And I also know that it is helpful, and I, so I edit books and design books. That's why I'm putting this out there. The other thing is, is if you put in page breaks, that will make it so that your pages are, so that your, that your sections are together. So that if you hit, because just as I go through this, I see that there's, you know, safety is our top priority. We have, number one is there, and then the rest of it is all on the next page. Just looking at it from a design standpoint and from understanding how it is that people access information, I might make those suggestions. I'm not saying it has to happen, but I think it would be helpful for people who have to review it. That's all.
Thank you. And that, well, that brings up a good question I should have asked for general questions first. This will be posted, each one individually, will be posted on the web. And will they also be distributed in print to families?
I think we'll try and do that upon request so as to not.
Sure. Yeah, because at least a handful of them were a couple dozen pages. So, yeah.
Well, does anyone really want all of our policies on paper at their house?
Well, I'm going to be printing out all those phone numbers. I can tell you that.
Well, yes.
I'd have everybody's phone number in one place. I'm joking. Okay, so they will primarily be a web document. So the suggestion to maybe make it more web-searchable, friendly was, yeah. Any other discussion questions about Academy of Early Learning? Yes, Member Hollins?
I really appreciate the work that went in, and I certainly understand that our policies apply to every school and every child. So I don't have any issue with having a standard set of policies and explaining things like expulsion and suspension. But I try to imagine myself a parent coming into our school system for the first time, and in the first handbook I get, it's all this really technical information, including expulsion, suspension. So my thought was, I thought the welcoming handbook that goes to parents, the first part that was sort of about the elementary school, like, we welcome you, and here's the people you work with, and we hope to see you, and here's the schedule. I thought that was fine, but I kind of had a reaction to a handbook that's usually used by high school students. But with all this really heavy technical information for people with tiny children just entering your district, I would personally rather see a friendly welcome book that goes to elementary school parents. And in it, it says, you know, next month, we're sending you the official school committee policies and guidelines for your reference or something. But I just thought it was overwhelming for somebody sending in an elementary child to our school. And I did check with some other school districts just because I'm a curious person, and some other school districts that have, you know, what they give parents when they register and come into our schools, it's much more child-friendly, you know, child-centered looking content. So that's, that was my thought about the element, the four, primary and preschool, there seemed awfully heavy-handed to give to parents just as they're coming into school. I'd rather see it divided and.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't see, Dr. Hul, I don't see you jumping to comment, so I would be happy to comment on this. We are presenting the information, I think you just heard, as a web-based document. So the parent actually is going to actually seek this information out. And I do find it interesting that my reaction is totally different than yours. I didn't even notice the section about expulsion because what I'm noticing is that the information is organized, the information is a broad range of things that parents have questions about. And I don't know how much time you spend interacting with the families in our district on a regular basis, but these items are the things that I personally get questions about all the time. And now there's this comprehensive document that we can refer students and families to on the web, and that can be used as a tool for anyone, whether it's an educator in the district or an administrator or our students and families. We have to have these basic tools in place for us to be able to say we're running the district with integrity and with a focus on communicating consistently to everyone. Dr. Hul, would you want to add anything? Or would any of the principals want to add anything to that? I'm not putting anyone on the spot.
Yeah, I, in terms of the policies, I mean, technically, we are required to notify parents of these policies and that we are actually required to get parents to sign off or caregivers, you know, to use a more inclusive term. But we are required to get caregivers to do a sign-off that they have read and that they understand these policies. And if the child is young, you do it with your child. And if the child is, you know, older, obviously, they can read and understand some of these things for themselves. But it really is a requirement that, you know, we communicate these with families and that we have parents understand that, you know, there are our policies by which we expect students to abide and consequences for discipline and all of those kinds of things. You know, I think trying to make it a little more developmentally appropriate, I think, could be in a next iteration of the handbook. But I mean, we just wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence here in getting the information out, but doing in a way that was, you know, this has come a long way since when I read the original handbook that's currently on the website. I just felt like I was, I almost can understand, Member Hollins, in terms of, I felt like I was bombarded with a lot of negative and punitive information from page one, never mind page 20. So I think this is at least a step in the right direction. So, you know, I think we, how that balance gets struck in the future of making sure that we're doing our due diligence and making sure that families are aware of policies and understand them and sign off on them, and how we do that in a way that, you know, doesn't seem overly punitive. I think there's a balance to be struck in another iteration.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Member Hollins, go ahead. You're on mute.
I'm sorry, I'm only commenting because I'm not sure if my comment was understood. I appreciate everything in the book, and I understand we need to have consistent quality information. I just think for, it needs to be divided, and the welcoming information, I don't disagree with anything Dr. Hul said. To me, it was unwelcoming, and if I were a parent and I got all of that bringing my child to kindergarten, I'd probably not. Not positive. That's it. I wasn't against anything you said about consistency.
So are there any, so we can keep this discussion organized. Are there any other member questions regarding general things about the handbook in general, like Member Hollins had some questions about generally? Let's take those now before we act, because the motion on the table is for the Academy of Early Learning Handbook. But I did, I neglected to give time for general questions, and so we can do that now and then do our motion. Are there other general questions about the content, the format? Member Abstrom, go ahead.
I actually do have a question related to content, and, but I was conscious of our working on the Academy of Early Learning. There is a, but now that we're doing general questions, there is a piece of when someone has had, what is it, 10 days in a row of absence, that the district is required to provide a tutor? I didn't see that anywhere. And I bring it up only because I did see all of the other things, and that isn't something that's sort of common knowledge. I know that for other reasons. But I think it seems to me it would be worth sharing that with people because more information is more information. And I, go ahead, Judy.
Part of the difficulty with doing this work, in all honesty, is that a lot of your policies are extremely old and out of date. They are what they are, so they've been included. But I think as you move forward, getting to the work of reviewing your policies writ large, particularly as they apply to the handbook, I mean, we've got some things in there that go back to 2004 that haven't been looked at since. So just having a thorough policy review, I think, is critical to making sure that everything is up to date and that, you know, we've included all of the applicable things. And in the absence and the 10-days business, that's kind of like a specialty home hospital or, you know, might have to do with special education. So she's working on, or Janet is working on some sort of a special education sort of procedural manual that is not ready at this current time. But those kinds of things for student services would be in that particular document.
Thank you. Any further general questions from the school committee members? I'm not hearing any. Okay, so we're going to.
Member Karen?
Member Karen, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to make a comment that Judy is, I'm sorry, this is, interim superintendent is really correct. A lot of our policies are outdated. It is work we were working on really hard pre-COVID. There is a lot that has been through a first reading that we just haven't finished yet. So I'm really hoping that some of that can get back on the agenda soon and that I can leave my successor in a couple of months with a good amount of stuff done. But I hear that, that we need to do that, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Member Karen. And can you send me a message to remind me to put that on my list for incoming superintendent de Barge to talk about putting that stuff on his schedule so we can get it? Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Anything further about general questions? That's probably, I'm assuming that's going to be it. Member Wall? General questions about the handbooks? No? Okay. So now we're going to go specifically on to the Academy of Early Learning, which is the motion on the table that we did stray from, but Member Johnson Musa is on vacation, so it's allowed. And are there any questions or discussion about the Academy of Early Learning Handbook, Family Handbook as presented? I'm not hearing any. So let's do a vote. We do have to do in the remote environment, the roll call votes. Vice Chair Abstrom?
Chair Proradi.
Yes.
Member Abstrom, I'm a yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
No.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so I want to think, I don't think I see Principal Putnam on the line, so please do thank her and the folks who, other folks who worked on this one, and that does pass. So now we have a, we're looking for discovery at school at Four Corners. I would like a motion to approve. I would like a motion to approve the 2021-2022 DSFC Family Handbook as presented.
So moved.
That was Member Extron and a second from Member Wall and discussion about the Discovery School Handbook. Not hearing any. We're ready to go to a vote. Let's go to a vote, a roll call vote, please.
Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Extron, yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
No.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we're, and thank you to Principal Putnam. The Extrons and the Putnams and Sorry.
Thank you.
And the Susan's.
For all the work on that one, I'll be calling all the people on that list for sure. I'm so excited to have the phone numbers, like I said.
And they're excited that you have them as well, I'm sure.
Oh, yes, I know, I know. Okay, moving on. A motion to approve the 2021-2022 Federal Street School Family Handbook as presented.
So moved.
And a second
Extron?
Member Extron. Any discussion?
I think Amy's frozen. I will say, hearing none. Let's move to a roll call. Chair Prayati?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Member Extron, yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
No.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I can't tell normally on these meetings when I'm frozen, so sorry if I was frozen.
I took over, it's all right.
And again, thank you to the Newton, that was Newton School, Federal Street School?
Federal.
Yeah, thank you to the staff there. And I did see Principal Fenimore on the line, right? Good luck, Principal Fenimore. Wishing you good luck in your health.
All right, moving on to Newton School. Hang on, people, you gotta mute. Sorry for that. Okay, Nicole is muted. Okay, so a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Newton School Family Handbook as presented. So moved. Extron?
Second.
That was Member Wall with the second. Any discussion of this one? Member Hollins, go ahead.
Yeah, I read it cover to cover. I certainly appreciate the effort. I think it's too stern for elementary.
Thank you.
Back session.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move to a vote on this one. This is Newton School.
Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extron, yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
No.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Sorry, we have motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to Middle School.
Greenfield Middle School, I will take a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Greenfield Middle School Family Handbook as presented.
So moved by Extron.
And a second, Member Wall with the second. Any discussion of this one? No discussion. I did neglect to thank Mel, who also answered questions before the meeting today. The Newton School Principal, thank you, Mel. Appreciate that and all the work that went into this. Now, I'm sorry, a roll call vote for the Middle School, please.
Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extron, yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
We are unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you. And Lindell, appreciated your comments at the beginning. Appreciate your work and your staff's work on this. Thank you. And we'll move on to Greenfield High School Family Handbook. A motion to approve the 2021-2022 GHS Family Handbook as presented.
So moved.
That was Extron and a second by Member Wall. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, let's move to a vote.
Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Extron, yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
We are unanimous. Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you all. Thank you to
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, and thank you for the Greenfield High School staff for working on that. Yes, Principal Cavalo, thank you very much to all of you. And I look forward to all of us keeping each other accountable for these being dynamic documents that need to be regularly updated. It's our responsibility, it's the school's responsibility, and we need to work together. These things are important. And it's great to have this first iteration. And I know a ton of effort went into this. And let's keep that momentum going as we move forward, because this is important stuff to have available and to have organized. So thank you all.
Yeah, I just want, it really is one of those things that people look around like, why is this important? Why do we need to do this? But as a lifelong admin, I know that this is important and it's really helpful. And it's really arduous and tedious and people hate doing it. However, it is really an important piece for everyone.
Definitely. Thank you again. Okay, so we're gonna move into the Section 5 of the agenda, which is approval of a couple new job descriptions or updated job descriptions. I'm not sure I remember which. Dr. Wall, do you want to introduce these for us?
These are actually new job descriptions because they were not job descriptions for these two positions in the past. These are for the two people in the payroll office who also handle most of our HR work for us. And it was just, again, an opportunity, they actually presented me with these job descriptions because I asked them to tell me a little bit about how their responsibilities are shared in the office. So they presented the first draft, we worked on them together. This did go to the Personnel and Collective Bargaining Subcommittee, was vetted and tweaked a little more. And what you have in front of you tonight is that committee's recommendation to approve.
And that, we'll also approach these in terms of the motion and decision one at a time. So I will, at this point, entertain a motion to approve the Payroll and Benefits Manager Job Description as presented.
So moved.
That was Member Extron, I believe, and a second?
Second.
Member Wall with the second. Thank you. Any discussion of these? Member Hollins?
I had two points to make about this one. I'm glad that we have it. The first was item two. I don't have the document in front of me, so I know it was number two, but I don't know where it falls on the job description, which talks about answering telephone and email inquiries, responding verbally and in writing, I think, to questions. And what I wanted to say is, I think there's a great, the way it's written there, we can't anticipate that this will go online. And there'll be, the question and answers will be something to reference so that the same people don't have to ask the same question all the time. And I think it would be helpful to add to that item number two, something like facilitate an online question and answer document that personnel can reference, including principals. That was one comment. And my second one is underperformance responsibilities. Items 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, 19, 22, maybe I didn't get them all. They all start with the two words ability to, but it's responsibilities of the job, which is a little different than your qualifications, ability to. So my recommendation is in those items to strike ability to and just have whatever it is the responsibility is. Those are my two comments.
Thank you for that, Member Hollins. I think your second comment, I mean, it actually makes sense to just take out the ability to. Can we make a friendly amendment to the motion to accept those changes post-vote? I think, Member Extron, you made the motion.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll make this
So I'll make the friendly amendment.
Thank you.
And I will agree with it.
Thank you. And then you had another, your other comment was about performance responsibility, number two, response to a large volume of telephone and email inquiries related to payroll and benefit. So I understand, I understand what you mean. I would like this to go forward and then, I think, talk bigger picture about how something like that gets implemented, because to me, a static, frequently asked questions document on a website, which I think is what you're asking about, right? Is, to me, that's a little bit outdated, like the collaborative may have a different way of doing it on a website that's a little more dynamic, something like that.
Calling out, oh.
Go ahead.
Sorry. All I know is to not anticipate anything other than repetitive questions being answered by phone and in person is really time-consuming. And there are other ways that frequently asked questions can be available to school personnel that are less time-consuming. That's all. I don't know the right way, but there's no inclination that that might be something the person would do here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think for now, though, we would have to leave that performance responsibility as is until we make a change. Dr. Wall, please go ahead. Thank you, you're so patient.
That's okay.
As I tap around.
The, I think with, I understand, certainly remember Hollins is coming from on this. And I do think that as part of your communications plan moving forward and some restructure of the website, I think that certainly things like that could be part of the overall district communications plan. And if that needs to be reinserted into its job description because of that work, I think that would make some sense. But absent the work, it might, this just might not be the time.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you both for that. Any further questions or discussion about this job description? Let's go ahead and do a vote then, a roll call vote, please. Vice Chair Extron?
Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extron, yes. Member Karen? Two may have cut out. Member Hollins?
Yes.
And Member Wall?
Yes.
We are, well, without, we, we're unanimous.
Member Karen, it sometimes has trouble getting off mute, I know that.
Yep, I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. I'm a yes. Sorry.
Thank you, it's fine. It was, we just listened to me stumble for a while, it's okay.
Sorry.
So the next job description, same thing, is a, I'm looking for a motion to approve the job description for the payroll and personnel assistant as presented.
So moved by Extron.
Member Extron and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Wall. And any discussion of this one? I'm not hearing any discussion. We can go ahead and move to a roll call vote, please.
Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extron, yes. Karen? Member Karen? Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the work on those, everyone, and for getting us past this point. That feels like an accomplishment for the last week with Dr. Wall. Last meeting with Dr. Wall.
Dun, dun, duh.
And now we are to the point where we're going to go into an executive session. I do just want to make a note, a housekeeping note about the remaining pieces of the agenda. The vote on item seven, the vote on custodian maintenance settlement agreement is already tabled from our previous meeting, so we don't need to do anything at this point because we will not be able to vote on that in public session yet again tonight, which is fine. There's no problem. We are just not able to move forward with it yet. So we are going to move forward with an executive session for exemption reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And as you know, I do declare, and the committee will not return to open session this evening.
Chair Prayati, you probably will have an action item in executive session.
We will return to executive, we will return to an open session. I am sorry.
Thank you.
So many things to keep in my little head. I am sorry. So we will return. It just will not be about custodian and maintenance. It'll be a surprise. We love surprises. Okay. Can I get a motion to open the executive session, please?
So moved.
And a second.
Second, Member Karen?
Member Karen with the second, thank you. And any, no, we're not gonna discuss that. We're just gonna do a roll call vote, please.
I'm gonna unmute for a minute.
Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Extron, yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like we're back online on GCTV. And we are out of executive session. And I am looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the appointment of an interim principal at Federal Street School as presented.
So moved.
Member Extron and a second?
Second.
That was Member Wall. And any discussion? I just want to really wish the best of luck to Principal Fenimore in this big life change and can't wait to hear all the details. Any other further discussion?
Yeah, let's announce that she is taking maternity leave, not leaving for greener pastures. Hence the interim.
Yes. Any further discussion? Let's move to a roll call vote, please.
Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extron, yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
We are unanimous. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved. And we have a second? I don't know who that was. Some, oh, Member Hollins?
Yep.
Roll call vote, please.
Chair Prayati?
Yes, and thank you very much, Dr. Wall, last meeting.
Mark here.
We'll be knocking on your door, don't you worry. Sorry, Member Extron, yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
We're unanimous, and I would just like to say, Dr. Wall, I don't know that we could have done this with anyone other than you. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, thank you.
It's my pleasure.
We appreciate you. All right, we are adjourned at 7:06. Thank you all. So enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Well.